You should have on your desk the minutes of the special council meeting of January the 8th, 2013. It's a special meeting because we moved it from January 1st to January the 8th. Are there any corrections or additions to these minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to be adopted as presented. Motion, Mr. Brown, second by Ms. Kyle. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You also should have minutes of the special council meeting on January the 15th, 2013, in front of you. Are there any corrections or additions at this time to those minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to be adopted as presented. Motion by Mr. Dunoff, second by Mr. Longshore. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we have some special presentations. Chief here? There you are. Chief Allen? One of these makes me feel really old because I coached him in high school football, so...
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
We have two service pins tonight. As I agree with the mayor, one of them makes me feel old also. The first gentleman, if you'd come up here, Glenn Kilby. Glenn's been with the department as a part-time employee for 15 years. Glenn is one of our truly dedicated employees, part-time fire fighter EMTs, and also works full-time for the Alexandria Fire Department as a firefighter EMT. Glenn, I'd like to congratulate you for your 15 years of service.
We got a pin coming. Just slow getting around the corner. Congratulations.
Okay, the next gentleman is the one that makes us all feel old, at least the mayor and I. Lieutenant Jim Brophy. Jim, you want to come up here, please?
Jim started out in the department as a volunteer, following in his father's footsteps. His father was lieutenant also for the department as a volunteer. So, his family has a history of fire service. Jim is an outstanding person, outstanding employee. He started, like I say, as a volunteer, worked his way up as a part-time employee, came full-time, and achieved the rank of lieutenant, shift lieutenant, which he served as a lieutenant at Station 3. Jim, congratulations on pointing your pin.
Thanks, sir.
Jeff Mouts. It's my pleasure tonight to present Jeff Mouts with his 10-year pin. Jeff has been with the police department, of course, 10 years. Jeff has been a part of our detective's office for the past eight years. He's paid it's past eight years. He's in charge of all of our investigations for new employees, background investigations. He's put that whole process in place. Jeff also has been a polygraph operator. He instituted our first polygraph operator program, found the school free, and went to it through his contacts with the Army. Jeff also serves in Criminal Investigation Division with the Army and serves. He has served two tours in Iraq, and Jeff, we appreciate everything you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. We now have a recognition that we didn't get done the last time.
Yes. Bill McGowan, just please come up here. A few years ago, the department started a recognition program. The purpose of this program was to provide awards and formal acknowledgement of exemplary service by department personnel. It is also to act as an incentive and reinforcement of the department's vision, mission, values, and statements, and value statements. Lieutenant Michael Bianchi nominated Bill for this award. I'm going to read his nomination letter. "I am writing proudly to nominate Officer William McGowan for the Chief's Award for Exemplary Performance under the department's Awards and Recognition Policy. This nomination is for his actions related to the investigation and prosecution of Michael B. Smith for manslaughter second degree. Smith was operating a motor vehicle when he struck and killed Peter P. Minor on I-75 on April 8th, 2011. I had been working with Officer McGowan, developing his experience in collision reconstruction, case investigation, preparation, documentation, and presentation. He always showed an openness to learning. He absorbed the advice I gave him and applied that to his training and experience. On the night of this incident, I was the shift supervisor and one of the first on the scene. We found Peter Minor deceased in the emergency strip about 100 feet past his vehicle, which was jacked up to change a flat tire. It was apparent the suspect vehicle crossed the fog line, struck and killed Mr. Minor, and fled the scene. Evidence, such as parts of the suspect vehicle, were thrown about the roadway. This case was more like a traditional homicide investigation than an automobile collision. We had a dead body with no suspect. We had roadway evidence and vehicle evidence. We needed to locate the vehicle, identify the suspect, and prove the suspect was driving the vehicle. Instead of shell casings to identify a gun, we had car parts to identify a vehicle. Instead of identifying who pulled the trigger, we needed to identify who was driving. Officer McGowan was called to assist, and he responded quickly. Without hesitation, he took ownership of the investigation. He accepted my advice whenever I had any, but mostly went about the business of investigating the case with little guidance. We know that Officer McGowan is very knowledgeable about cars, and that showed in this investigation. He identified some key pieces of car parts and then took them to Rick's Auto Body where he was able to determine the make and model of the suspect vehicle, and narrowed it down to within a few model years. This was a tremendous help in broadcasting an attempt to locate to all surrounding agencies and the news media. Later that evening, Officer Panko from Elsmer, acting on a citizen's tip, located the vehicle in their city. Again, Officer McGowan came out and met me at the scene, where we determined that we did have the suspect vehicle. Elsmer officers had contacted Michael Smith, who denied being the driver. Officer McGowan conducted a good interview with Smith, locking him into a story. McGowan also noticed Smith sending numerous text messages during the conversation, and he recognized the potential value, so he did not attempt to stop Smith from texting. While Smith said he had loaned his vehicle to an unknown friend, he also told McGowan that he had constant possession of his phone. Later, Officer McGowan went through all the proper court procedures to obtain text messages and the information from the cell tower showing the phone's approximate location. This evidence showed incriminating texts against Smith and led to additional witnesses who he had asked to provide him with alibis. It also showed the phone traveling south on I-75 at the time Mr. Minor was killed. For several days, Officer McGowan and I worked together as partners. We processed and logged all the evidence, obtained court orders and implemented them. We tracked down every lead and every possible witness. Officer McGowan maintained an extremely professional, business-like demeanor and stayed focused on the task even when provoked by some hostile witnesses. After that initial flirt investigation, I left Officer McGowan to keep on working on his own. He did an extremely thorough job, and I know he did much of it on his own time. He kept me updated on the progress and listened to my suggestions, although he usually had already done what I was suggesting. After an exhaustive investigation, Michael B. Smith was charged with manslaughter second degree. Smith went through several attorneys and gave every indication that he intended to fight the charges, always denying being the driver despite the mounds of evidence against him. He eventually ended up with Scott Crowswell from Cincinnati as his attorney. Some of our officers who worked in Hamilton County told me that Crowswell is a very heavy-hitter, trout-oriented defense attorney. We expected a battle, but after Mr. Crowswell reviewed the case, he convinced Smith to take a plea deal to reckless homicide, giving the Minor family some resolution to the nightmare of their loss. Officer McGowan showed his strong dedication to his professional development in cases he's worked leading up to this case. Then, he pulled all that work together into this investigation, going above and beyond a typical investigation. It was through Officer McGowan's work that Michael B. Smith was identified, arrested, and held accountable for his actions. On a note on my part on this, Rob Sanders, our Commonwealth attorney, had made a statement to the press early on in this investigation that he doubted very seriously that anybody would ever be charged with this. At the end, he praised Officer McGowan's work on this case, and it was instrumental in getting this conviction for this family. I think everybody remembers the case two years ago out on the highway. Bill, it's my pleasure to give you the exemplary performance award.
Chief Fields, do we have a couple of promotions this evening?
We do.
Would you like to introduce them to us, as if we don't know who they are?
Due to the recent retirement of Lieutenant Michael Bianchi, which came on rather quickly, we went from our promotional list in the last process that we had done just last October, it came up with the list. With Sean Sims and Todd Rice, please come forward, please. Five of us.
I have one, if you need one.
Yes. Front and center. Due to this, Sergeant Sean Sims will now be, I guess, sworn in as our newest lieutenant, and Officer Todd Rice will be sworn in as our newest sergeant. Both of them have been here several years. Rice retired and actually came back when we took over Creston Springs. Sean has been here many, many years, very dedicated employee. It's a pleasure to have both of them in front of you tonight, Mayor.
And it's a pleasure to be able to administer the constitutional oath to you all. Are you, I'm going to do it to you at the same time, okay? Are the two of you prepared to take the constitutional oath?
Yes.
All right, would you raise your right hand? Do you, Sean Sims and Todd Rice, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as you continue as citizens thereof, and that you will faithfully execute to the best of your abilities the office of police lieutenant and police sergeant according to law? And do you further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present constitution, you, being citizens of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it, nor have you sent a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have you acted as a second in carrying out a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending, so help you God? Congratulations.
I want to thank my family for being here tonight. My wife, Pam, most of my children are sitting here. All of you here. I want to thank the staff of the Earlanger Police Department for giving me an opportunity for a second time to be a leader in this organization, and hopefully I'm going to be here for a little while. And I appreciate the city council and Mr. Mayor here for supporting his decision and giving me another opportunity to go up through the ranks of this organization. I hope to stay here for a little while. Thank you.
I'm usually a little long-winded. I won't be tonight. I just want to tell everybody. That's why they call me Wendy. I'd just like to thank the city for giving me the opportunity and the privilege to serve it. I've been here 17 years. I can't think of any place in the state of Kentucky or this United States that I'd rather serve, and I'm proud to be here in Earlanger. Thank you.
Most of you all know that these promotions are both hard and easy. They're easy because we have such quality people within the police department who are ready for these promotions that we're choosing the best of the best. We've got the cream of the crop. They're hard because everybody's qualified, and we had gone through this procedure before. We developed the list, and when Lieutenant Bianchi decided to retire, bless his heart, and we hope he loves riding the Zamboni around the arena down there. I think he said, "I'm going to be a professional Zamboni driver." But when he decided to retire, we went back to the list. You know, Todd, we're lucky because state law allowed us, when we took over the Creston Springs Police, to bring you back because you had retired, and it's a very fortunate thing. And Sean, we've been watching you grow up through the ranks forever. So, these are great promotions tonight, and I'm tickled to death for you and for our department. So, congratulations to all of you. And we have, Chief, who's doing the special? Are you doing that one?
I'm doing it.
All right. Chief and chief.
A few months ago, Chief Fields had the privilege to introduce the first part of the SRT unit, the Special Response Team of the officers. Tonight, something that Chief Fields and I have been working on for a long time, we're able to introduce the second part of the SRT team. It's going to be SRT medics. These medics have been trained under Commander Ayler and his staff. They've been through a mini-academy, so they've got the basics down, and they'll continue their training throughout the extent of this, to be SWAT medics, SRT medics. Their primary mission will be the safety of the police officers that's in harm's way in a bad situation. They'll also be the first line of defense to the victims of something tragic would occur. I'd like to introduce these gentlemen tonight. I'd like to introduce first firefighter paramedic Joe Kappa. Joe, you want to come up?
Up here, Joe. We're all going to look at you.
Firefighter paramedic Josh Cox. Firefighter paramedic Rick Sturgeon. Firefighter paramedic Ryan Whaley. And firefighter paramedic Eric Robinett. We do have one other firefighter paramedic. It's the Lieutenant Craig Stewart. He's on an airplane flying home from Las Vegas tonight. But this is part two of the SRT unit. Chief Fields, do you have anything you want to say?
When we put the SRT team together, we talked about putting the paramedics on it for a long time, and we had several people apply. These are the ones that came through and actually went through all the training, and they do all the training with the SRT members, and that is something that's really commendable. I think this is another partnership between the police department and the fire department that we can build on in the future. We've done several things together. This is only a continuation of that for the safety of other officers, plus the other citizens that we're serving. So, I want to congratulate all of them for all the hard work that they've done because I know how hard this was for them to do, and they put in the extra time to do it. Thank you very much. Next step.
Some people may question why a town like Earlanger has groups like this put together. All we have to do is look at what happened in a small town of Alabama last week, and this situation could arise at any time, and we're doing our level best to be prepared here in this town. And hats off to all of them. So, very good. That's the end of our special presentations this evening. Now, it's time for the mayor's report, and that usually cleans the room. The mayor's report tonight will be very short. First, I was privileged to get asked to go speak to the WIZ kids, which is a group of elementary students up at the Earlanger Baptist Church a couple of weeks or so ago. These are the kids from Lineman School who have been identified as in need of one thing or the other. I saw a great group of adults up there providing mentoring services. They had some exercise, recreation, and helped with their homework, and I was pleased to be asked to go. I've talked with Dr. Burkhard of the Earlanger-Elsmer Board of Education, and they're trying to expand that program to the other elementary schools, and they're looking for, hopefully, the churches in our community to band together and help sponsor that. As you all know, Mayor Lindhoff and I, you all, Earlanger City Council and the Elsmer City Council, are doing that same sort of thing at the middle school level. And the sixth grade participation, Dr. Burkhard tells me, is outstanding, and that's where it was going to start. So, we're having a positive impact, from what we can tell now, on the youth in our community outside of the school setting. The second thing I wanted to say tonight is I don't want any of my comments that I made, particularly the last week, to be taken in any way to disparage the brave men and women and Director Butler working at the Kenton County Emergency Communications Center. Those telecommunicators and the staff working at the Kenton County Center are doing a wonderful job under the circumstances, and they've worked well to combine Covington into their existing operation, and they're going to be taking on some of our current partners here soon. Ed Butler is an outstanding director. He's going to do a great job, and the comments that I made were not directed at those people. They're doing a wonderful job, and we're going to be a good partner with them, Earlanger PSCC and the county PSCC into the future, and we're counting on them, and they're counting on us. So, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood how we value, how I as a mayor and the police department and the fire department and our first responders value the partnership we have with the Kenton County PSCC, as well as we do with Boone, which sometimes dispatches our people too. So, we're all in this together. It's quite a partnership. Other than that, it's been a busy month. Most of you all know I leave for Dallas tomorrow. I'm wearing the two hats right now. My president-elect of the Kentucky Bar Association is dragging me down there for American Bar Association meetings for three days. I'll be back in the start budget meetings as soon as I get back in town. So, it's nonstop. I'm going to find some time in there to practice law and make a little money. That seems to be taking a backseat right now. But, as they say, if you hold your breath long enough, February will be over, and it'll be arch, and we'll be back here again, and it'll be a little warmer. So, let's just get through February, and let's hope the cats keep winning. All right, that's the end of my report. Now, let's move on to reports of Standing Committee's first public safety. Ms. Pitts?
Okay. First of all, everybody should receive their December 2012 police report. It's kind of nice. Most of the crimes were down from 2011, except for thefts were up. I'm also going to combine, if it's okay, this with our cleanup Earlanger committee.
Sure, go right ahead.
The other thing that was up was codes enforcement. Officers Jewett and Jolly have been very busy. 2012, they received over 2,200 light complaints compared to 1,600 the year before that. Most were legitimate complaints, and they appreciate it because everybody looking out is their eyes because they can't be everywhere to see the problems, and that does help them. They're currently in the process of garbage can compliance, working neighborhood to neighborhood. It's a long process, so just a friendly reminder, when you take your trash out, take it out the night before. The next day, bring it in that night, and either put in your garage, the side of your house, or behind your house. That'll be a big help to them to get that word out there so they can concentrate on other polite issues. We also met, we were asked to meet again about the camper boat storage issue. So, we did meet again last month about that and brought it back up for discussion. There are only two homeowners that really have an issue that want to be grandfathered in. One of those homeowners actually can do a little bit of work on his fence to make him in compliance with his storage. So, it's our recommendation to leave the ordinance as is, and those two situations, they're not going to cite them this year since of their extenuating circumstances, so they just have until November 1st to get storage for next year. And that's it. And Chief Fields is in the house.
And then, in front of Chief Fields. Any questions in the committee or the chief? Here, and then we'll move on to public safety and fire. Mr. Dunoff?
Okay, I'm going to do Mark Stewart's report first.
All right, Mark.
And he's not here, but I just want to remind you, we're going to have a first reading tonight on the floodplain ordinance. And what that is, there's a legislation that will have a first reading tonight that will update the floodplain regulations and the zoning ordinance. This update will need to be in place by May 16, 2013, so that the city can stay enrolled in the National Flood Insurance Program. The main update is adopting new floodplain maps that go into effect on that date. These are federal regulations, and they have had a public hearing at the Kenton County Planning Commission, so the city cannot amend these regulations, and that's why we're going to have that first reading tonight. And like I said, we can't amend it even if we wanted to anyway, but it's something we have to do in order to get it taken care of by man. So, that was Mark's. The other thing I have under fire, everybody should have got the chief's report. If you have any questions, just contact him or Assistant Chief Shulkers. Secondly, we got this letter that they want me to read. "Chief Allen, on Monday, January 14, 2013, investigators from our Criminal Investigation Division, who were just getting knee-deep into homicide investigation, reached out to you asking, as we often do, for you to assist us with your cadaver canines in locating evidence in a brutal homicide where the victim was dismembered. As you know, from your experience, these type situations that need to be handled immediately don't happen in the middle of a sunny 80-degree day. As fate would have it, this case started really moving along late in the evening of a very cold day lasting all night, and then the following day, when they searched a landfill with rakes and shovels. We needed your expertise on two separate occasions. First, at the original homicide scene, and then again, the following day, at the Walton City Park at a suspected discarding location. I just want you to know how much I appreciate what you did for us. For the deputies working the case, the use of you and your canines was huge. For me, the fact they were able to get assistance that facilitated their investigation is equally impressive. I remain indebted." Mike Way-Helmig, Sheriff, Boone, Kenny.
And the chiefs in the house. Chief Allen?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to update everyone on Station 3. The Station 3 project has started. The demolition is being done this week. All the demolition work has been done by our staff to save dollars on that project. They did all the demo. Most of it is completed. They'll finish it tomorrow. The rescue truck project between police and fire, that vehicle should be finished next week and be available and be on the road. That's all I have, sir.
Any questions in the chief or the committee?
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing that, we'll move on to public works. Mr. Cahill, Mr. Brown.
Sure. We actually have a report. You should have received a report from Mr. Burkhard outlining all this been going on. I just wanted to also remember, remind you all that your Capitol line is open, and also you can go to the website for the Capitol. If I didn't say it out of the goodness. You have one resignation from date 2/5/2013. I'm devising that February 28, 2013 will be my last day of employment in the city of Earlanger. This is from Tim. So, I put that into the record. And then, we did have an issue with the driver concern. Can we leave from 15? Did you update us?
Sure. I believe we discussed it, but there was no decision or change to be made, as I recall, so we're just going to allow it to be the way it is and be enforced as it currently is.
And Mr. Burkhard is in the house?
Mr. Burkhard. I think we all speak as one wishing Tim beat him well. A bad health situation has found his way into his house, and we wished him nothing but the best, and we help him any way we can, and we have, and we wish him well in his retirement. So, all right, very good. Next is the administration. Mr. Burke, Mr. Longshore.
I've got a couple of things. The offices of the city will be closed, President's Day, February 18th. Property taxes collected in January were $96,843 for a total of $3,815,556, and had a total of $68,662 to Lincoln for the year. And passports, 206 passports in the month of January, total of over $5,000. That's all I have.
Government offices will be closed, February 18th, 2013. President's staying. And Ms. Andrews is in the house?
Is she? Any questions in the committee or Ms. Andrews? Seeing them, we'll move on to finance. Mr. Hyatt, Mr. Boynton.
Yes, Mayor. The budget's going on now, 2014, and the three-year fiscal plan is through January, June 30, 2016, is well underway. The preliminary draft of the budget, which contains all the requests the department has and operating departments, is now being prepared as well. We are requesting a finance committee meeting on Saturday morning, February 16th, at 9:00 a.m., in order to present the preliminary budget request to council as a whole. Practice will be available to anyone interested at 8:30, and we expect that meeting to be over by noon. So, that's, and Greg Engelmann's in the house, if he is...
That's our annual budget carnival.
Exactly.
Did he say the 15th or 16th?
This is the 10th or the 16th?
16th.
I'm getting old. I'm having a hard time here.
Strangelman. Any questions of the committee or Strangelman? Next is Friendship City Networking. Ms. Cahill, Ms. Kyle.
The website has a new project, has begun with rotating photo galleries being placed on individual department pages. At this time, only general government has those pictures on right now, but as soon as Q-Send adjusts everything on all the issues, and general government is completed, then the other departments will have photo galleries on each one of their website pages. And the employee chili cook-off was January 23rd, and I heard it was a great success. They were talking about it. There were a lot of participants in it, and there were four categories, and everyone who tasted the chili casted... four categories, and everyone who tasted the chili, uh, cast a vote, and I think maybe it was the police department or fire, can't remember, just eating all the food up or whatever. I think that was her lunch and dinner, no, no. Uh, and, uh, Chief Fields won the spiciest, uh, Faith Woods won the best, uh, white chicken chili, Dale Wilson won the best surprise ingredient, and I don't know if anybody knows what that is yet. Nobody will tell, okay? And, uh, Jason Imes won best overall chili, so congratulations to all of those. And the Erlanger Swim Night at Silver Lake Recreation on January the twenty-sixth, I was there, and it was an awesome event. A hundred and eighty people showed up for this event to enjoy a cold day, but in the warmth of the Silver Lake Recreation Center. Families had an opportunity to enjoy all the amenities of Silver Lake, get out of the cold for a few hours, and they would like to thank Silver Lake Recreation for working with the city so that they could provide this great event to all our residents.
And then, I have a few things. Um, we had a, um, Northern Kentucky Legislative Caucus held here on Saturday, February second, in the Erlanger Council Chambers, and I guess everybody made it through the snow. I was a little old, so I didn't make it. And then, we do have some, uh, exciting upcoming events. Um, this Sunday is the Valentine's Event, and, um, that's this Sunday, February the tenth, and it's at the Erlanger branch of the Kenton County Public Library. It will begin at two PM, and they have face painting, crafts, balloon sculptures, and Goldie the Clown. And this event is free to everyone, and usually it's a pretty well-attended event. Um, also, we've done this every year, it's the annual ball field lottery. Um, it's gonna take place on Monday, February the eleventh, at six-thirty PM, and representatives of baseball, softball leagues are invited to the annual lottery to assign baseball, softball fields to leagues planning to use the Erlanger fields, um, Silver Lake One, Silver Lake Two, and Spring Valley for the two, one, for the two thousand thirteen season. Uh, if you have any questions, just contact Faith Woods. And then, also, this is another event, annual event, we have the two thousand thirteen scholarship, and the applications are now available, um, and it's called the City of Erlanger Community Achievement Scholarship. I think we usually make those available to the schools, uh, in Erlanger, or schools that have Erlanger residents attending them. Um, if you're interested, please see the city's website for eligibility requirements. The deadline to turn this application in is March the eighth. And again, if you have any questions, contact Faith Woods. And Ms. Hopkins is in the audience? Do you have any?
No report. And this is another one, Becky, as we all know, lost her father recently, so we extend our condolences to you and your family, Becky. You all, uh, by the way, people who are watching this, folks who have won the scholarship in recent years have been students from Dixie Heights High School, Lloyd Memorial High School, St. Henry District High School, Notre Dame. So, it's for Erlanger kids, I don't care where you go to school, pick up the, the application and apply. And, uh, if you're the best, you'll win, because we have a committee that grades these things. Um, so, it's, you know, what they say, free money. And if you want some help with your school, we're, we're here to try to help you. You all have heard the reports of standing committees. Are there any que- any additions or corrections? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to be adopted as presented. Motion, Mr. Dunoff, second by Mr. Longshore. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any reports from any of our representatives to agencies this evening? Ms. Kyle, first.
Um, the Historical Society, we are privileged to have Mr. Paul Hahn here this evening.
We saw Paul wandering around. He's been here before. His picture's hanging back there.
Yeah. Frightened by the death, wanted to see me coming with a piece of paper, but believe me, I'll make this very short, because we left the copy. All our yearly take on everyone's boxes. So, I do wanna, do wanna give you an up- update on where we are here, your, um, Historical Society has been in the last year. Uh, I can tell you this, the very best Heritage Day was celebrated in September. This gives me an opportunity to say thank you to Vicki Cowan, the council representative of the Historical Society, and all the city employees for all their help during Heritage Day. In May, the so- the society had a great presentation at the library on the nineteen-forty-seventh with over one-hundred attendees. In June, my wife, Pat, which I'm very proud of, was appointed to the Kentucky State Association called Kentucky Heritage and Museum Alliance. There are twelve board members representing diff- different parts of the state, and Pat represents the fourteen Northern Kentucky counties, so it's kind of a feather in our hat, sure to have Pat on that board. Several new donation, new donations were received this year, such as bank checks and deposit slips from the old Elsmere Bank from Carolyn White, Fireman Memorial, uh, memorabilia from Rick Bull, beautiful framed Erlanger Monopoly set from Ms. Linda Carter. The society purchased three Lionel locomotives, which are replicas of the steam engine that passed through the city of Erlanger. Museum, as we told you many times, is open from twelve noon till four, every Saturday, from March the fifteenth through December fifteenth. I was surprised, look at the signature book and see about three-hundred-and-fifty signatures with compliments, uh, listed for two thousand and twelve. Of, of course, not everyone signed the book. We also have the museum open by appointment for scout troops, school classes, families that visit us on Saturdays. Several of the local churches had their picnics at the park this year, and museum was open for their enjoyment. I cannot leave without saying thank you, thank you, thank you for the painting and repairs to the eighteen-seventy-seven building this year. Just goes to show, Erlanger is always on top of the game, and we really appreciate it. Just a reminder that the Historical Society dues for two thousand and thirteen are now due. Dues are only ten dollars, and we hope lots of citizens and council members will join. We have a membership of about a hundred and twenty folks today. We meet on the second Wednesday of each month and usually have a short presentation about Kentucky history. This month, we have watched a film produced by one of Erlanger's own, Matt Cooney. The title is Before Las Vegas There Was Newport. The meeting date is February the thirteenth at seven o'clock, and we always have refreshments, so come and join us. Thank you.
It's always great to have Mr. Hahn back amongst us. Ms. Pitts.
Um, about ten days ago, I attended the Northern Kentucky Municipal League meeting, and, um, its subject was about the heroin, um, increasing heroin in Northern Kentucky. Um, they had several guest speakers. Um, they were, basically, a few things they covered was, the reason it's so rampant now is because they've cracked down on the pill mills, the prescription medicines, and so now everybody that were addicted to those are seeking heroin because it's easy to get and it's cheap. And so, they're trying to find ways to get this under control, because the other issue with it is hepatitis C is on the rise. So, um, so they had discussions about that, and, um, the interesting thing also was they had two people, two men, local men, from this area who were filming the whole meeting, and what they're doing is a documentary. They're working on a documentary about heroin and drugs in general, and, um, they're gonna try to do it like, remember the Scare Straight years ago, to scare kids from ever getting in prison? They're trying to focus it that way, to maybe show young kids while they're still impressionable not to start drugs and see if that helps, so, that, that was an interesting meeting.
Any other? Yes. Is that, is it the same two folks that are the, uh, a couple lawyers from over in Cincinnati way? Is that the same guys?
No, no, I don't think they were lawyers, no. One was a Holmes graduate, and I, I don't know what the, who the other one was, but none of them were lawyers.
When I had another one of those conflicts, uh, the Kenton County Mayor's Group in January was the same weekend as the Kentucky Bar Board of Governors, so I was engaged in that one, since I'm the president-elect there, not a, not of the Mayor's Group, but Chief Fields attended for me. And they had the same discussion about heroin at the Mayor's Group. They spent, um, quite a long time, uh, talking in that meeting about it. As you all know, I do a lot of domestic relations work in my law practice, and, um, we have in the family courts what we call the DNA docket, which stands for dependency neglect and abused kids. And the DNA dockets are longer than your arms and your feet put together because of all the parents being hooked on heroin. And the kids are being paid, are paying for it. This is a byproduct, it's not just the people who are addicted, they're neglecting the kids, and the kids are having to be paid for by you and me through the state of Kentucky and our welfare people. So, this is a problem that affects us in so many levels, in so many ways, and it affects every single one of us, whether we're involved in it or have any, if we're taxpayers, we're involved in it. So, anytime anybody can help, you see, any place where you can help in this scourge, dig in there, because it's, it's a big problem here in Northern Kentucky now.
And when I was doing the police report, most of our crime is down, except theft, and the reason theft is up is because they're trying to get money, selling whatever they can get, so.
Okay. Any other reports of representatives this evening? Seeing that, we'll move on to reports of city operations, city engineer, Mr. Vioxx.
Yes, sir. At our January meeting, if you recall, I mentioned that, uh, we were waiting for the state of Kentucky to authorize us to take bids for the Dixie Highway beautification project. Shortly after that meeting, we did get authorization to move forward, and in fact, we are taking bids this Friday at ten o'clock, so we'll have, uh, be asking for probably a special meeting sometime in this month to award that contract. We won't be able to award it immediately, because we'll have to get approval of the bids by the state, but we are moving forward with the project. And the project's been so long comin- coming that some of you may not even remember exactly what the project is. The project starts at Graves Avenue and ends at Byan Street in Elsmere. It's on both sides of the street, it's a combined project with the city of Elsmere and the city of Erlanger. We're replacing the, all the sidewalks on both sides of the highway with stamped pavement, uh, which has pattern in it, uh, replacing the curbs. Uh, we are also, uh, uh, stamping the entrances to all the commercial establishments along, along there. Uh, we're doing landscaping, uh, some between the sidewalk and the edge of the curb, and some behind the sidewalk. We're putting conduits in for street lighting, and if there is enough money left in the grant, after we take these bids, we actually are gonna contract with Duke to put in the boulevard lights along the sidewalk. Uh, we're replacing the, uh, bus stop at McAlpin Avenue, including a bus pull-off, so the bus will be able to pull out of the traffic at that location. Uh, I'm sorry, that's stuck with this project, but it's coming, uh, with the next project. The, uh, we're anticipating this project to be within the limits of our grant, and we, uh, uh, if you remember, it was funded by the monies that were, came from the, uh, what was it, organization, David?
Renaissance.
Renaissance. Uh, so, that, that, those funds are avail- already available, and I think David has access to those funds now. So, Friday will be that date, and this is the project that Patty was so excited about when we thought we were gonna do it two years ago, and I've already, uh, informed her that we are taking bids, so she's thrilled. Uh, the second matter I have is that there's gonna be a waiver, there is a waiver application at the Planning Commission for a sidewalk waiver in the area of the Villa Springs, uh, senior facility. There are some circumstances surrounding that waiver that I think the city needs to give some direction to our representative as to how we want to support this application. So, we'd like a committee meeting, uh, as soon as possible to discuss that. That's all I have.
That would be the Public Works Committee, and that would be the third Tuesday, today's put the fifth, nineteenth. Okay? Anything else?
That's all I have, sir.
Any questions, Mr. Vioxx? Yes, ma'am.
Um, I have a question about the, um, lineup of the, um, McAlpin Avenue. Do we have a timeline on that? Is there any?
That project is actually in Frankfurt, we're waiting for authorization to take bids on it.
As soon as they tell us okay, we're gonna bid it and build it.
And hopefully David, David and I'll be relieved of these grants for a while.
Any other questions? City Attorney, Mr. Wickman.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, other than the ordinance on the agenda this evening, I do have an item I'd like to discuss or have probably put into a committee. Greg Engelman and I and the mayor have, uh, uh, come up with a method of funding the dispatch center as an alternative to the nine-one-one fees that are, as you all know, are diminishing every year. Uh, it is a franchise fee for, it, 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 the, the process is to establish an ordinance or enact an ordinance establishing a franchise for the distribution of electricity in the city, and then, which would include a, a fee, uh, uh, on the gross receipts of the util- of the electric utility, which is Duke Energy, uh, from the consumers in the city of Erlanger. Um, I'm in the process of preparing those documents. We have a choice, we can either wait until the next council meeting, when I can present them to you, and then refer it to a committee, or we can anticipate that and refer it to a committee meeting. And since Mr. Vioxx has got one scheduled for the third Tuesday, I would recommend we, uh, put on the agenda for that committee meeting a proposed franchise ordinance.
Ostensibly, that would be the administration committee, but let's do that that same night. Sounds good?
That's all I have, Mayor.
You all are aware that as part of this dispatch dialogue that's been taking place, the discussions that we had with our partners a year ago or so, we were asked if we were gonna continue to find an alternative source to fund the dispatch, just before the county made its plans and decided to do what it was gonna do. And I said yes, and we have, and we've come up with an alternative plan that's been used in other cities here in Northern Kentucky, successfully has survived court challenge, and is being used by three or four cities.
Or not. I know of three or four, but I'm sure there's more than that.
I know of three or four, and there's many more right now. So, you know, we know we were gonna have to come up with an alternative funding source for this. We think we found it, we're gonna talk about it at the committee meeting, okay? Very good. You've heard the reports of city operations, are there any, uh, questions or additions this time? Yes.
Reminder of, we have a steering committee meeting, also on the night case.
That's the Commonwealth Station?
Yes.
Is it, all right. Is that, is that a seven?
No, that's, that's what you're gonna present to council.
Yeah, so we'll have three of them that night, so play it on stand here for a while. Okay, thank you.
Break some lunch.
Break some lunch. I already said a motion to be adopted as presented, motion by Mr. Longshore, second by Mr. Burke, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Correspondents this evening, Ms. Hopkins.
Yes, sir. The administration department received a thank-you card from Erlanger Elsmere School District Nurse, Mary Birch. She thanked them for the donation they made to their school's health center, um, before the Christmas break. Erlanger resident Donna Abden McDaniel sent an email thanking the city workers of Erlanger for keeping the streets in Erlanger in good shape. And Faith Woods received an email from Kathy Rolfsen thanking the city for having the Erlanger Swim Night at Silver Lake. She stated they had a great time. And Faith also received an email from Linda Steiby stating that their family also had a blast at the Erlanger Swim Night. And Faith received an email from Janine Smith stating that the whistle stop was a great newsletter, and she enjoyed receiving it each month. And Mayor Rouse received a letter from the Northern Kentucky Area Development District thanking the city for their contribution.
Any other correspondence this evening? Because, Rick, because we haven't said anything, don't let the folks that work for you think that we don't appreciate, but we're just so used to the great job that they do, and we're used to waking up after snowstorms with our streets already clear, then it becomes second nature. Well, it's not. We really appreciate it, make sure they, they've got that, okay? Very good.
So, you can stick around, last night, I'm gonna bring it.
That's right. Now's the time on our agenda that we reserve for citizens and public comments. Jeff, you've, um, signed up, it's good to see you again, and, uh, take the microphone.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council staff. Uh, my name's Jeff Wilson, I'm with Republic Services, CSI. Uh, before I say anything, I, I just had to tell you, um, it's pretty refreshing to come into a council meeting and hear the caring comments, uh, humanity, and of course, the recognition and efforts of your, and longevity of your employees. I mean, I, that's, that's really nice. Personally, I wanna tell you that we wanna be here the next hundred years as well, so. Uh, and I just, again, I wanna thank you all for allowing us to, to be your service provider, trash recycling. Uh, we've been working, uh, pretty, pretty well with Sherri and, and Missy in the front office, uh, I, I think so anyway. We've had a change in supervisors, and we've made those introductions, so everybody's got faces with names, um, and... And would like to remind everyone that if any of your constituents have an issue, they're more than welcome to call our customer service center, it's a local call, it's a 513 local call number, 771-4200. And you'll get one of our six or seven CSR folks. So, again, I'm taking more time, but I want to thank you again from all of us at CSI and Republic Services, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any bids this evening?
No, sir.
No bids, okay.
Is there any reports of work in progress this evening? I have two items I want to bring to your attention, just because it's in the news and it's work in progress because it's old news. In 2011, this organ, this body passed a resolution opposing tolls on the Brent Spence Bridge. Some of the councils are doing it now. We were on, we've been on the record for over a year and a half opposing tolls from the Brent Spence Bridge. So I just want to remind the public that we were there early and we're still there. The second thing I wanted to inform you all about is we are in the preliminary stages of discussing the possibility of a building project in combination, one way or the other, with the Erlanger Elsmere Board of Education on the property across the street that's going to include the much-needed renovation, upgrade, perhaps rebuild, depending on what the architect comes up to, up with with Firehouse One. We're going to, we were going to have to take on that project anyway. We have some needs for space, for offices. I have been screaming to have a huge rec room or a senior center facility here in our government center for years, and it looks like we're going to try to work on that. The Board of Education needs a new ADA-accessible Board of Education room where they have their board meetings and training. So we're working on a partnership with the Board of Education on coming up with a facility. Mr. Sander and I started this discussion years ago. He resigned and moved on to a different school district. Ms. Burkhardt's had her handful, but it's now on the front burner. And when we have, and they've been working, we had a meeting here a couple weeks ago, and the architect has met with Chief Allen and his command staff on what the needs are there. I'm going to suggest to all of our department heads that when we start looking at space needs that we may have right now, whether or not it's in this project, let's get them on the table. Let's get everything up there now, because if we're going to entertain a building project and we've got some land available, or we wound up purchasing some land, this is the time to at least be thinking about it. So I'll tell it to all of you, and make sure that you coordinate with Chief Allen, who's in direct contact with the architect. At this stage, who's Emmett Hayes, who works with the school board all the time, is in charge of building the new Lloyd High School over here right now and 10 feet from us, and the additions to Dorothy Howell that's going on in Elsmere right now. All right? Those are the two works in progress. Do you have anybody else have any? Does anybody have anything new for the good and welfare of the city? Saying none, Mr. Wickman, legislation?
Yes, sir. First ordinance is an ordinance of the City of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, admitting the Personnel Pay and Classification Plan, ordinance number 2371, to add there to a new position of employment entitled Administrative Grant/Supply Coordinator in the Police Department.
This is a second reading. I'll entertain a motion to be adopted and order published. Motion by Mr. Howard, second by Ms. Pitts. Any discussion? Roll call, Wood.
Mr. Dunhoff?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Longshore?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Howard?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Burke?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes. Mr. Wickman?
It's an ordinance of the City of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, repealing in their entirety the existing text of the floodplain regulations in section 9.24 of the Erlanger zoning ordinance, and adopting a new floodplain regulations to comply with paragraph 603D of the National Flood Insurance Program Regulations. This is the ordinance that Councilperson Dunhoff was referring to, the enactment of the ordinance is required to qualify for floodplain insurance. There's no reason not to do it, and if we don't do it, we don't qualify, and people, if they do get flooded, cannot qualify for that insurance. So there's no reason not to enact it.
I'll ask the city clerk to note in a minute the first reading of that ordinance. Mr. Wickman?
It's an ordinance of the City of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, repealing sections two and three of ordinance 2265 regarding the termination of the Erlanger employees and non-elected officers. By summary, this is the ordinance we had discussed earlier. We presently have a, an ordinance that restricts the authority of the mayor to hire and fire department heads and non-elected officers. This is, the existence of that ordinance is what complicated the situation in regard to the former city clerk, and I can tell you, it probably cost the city about $70,000 because of it. I'll entertain any questions about it, but we're recommending the enactment of the ordinance to expand the authority of the mayor to terminate and/or discipline department heads and non-elected officers.
I'll ask the city clerk to note in a minute the first reading of that ordinance. Resolutions, Mr. Wickman?
City of Erlanger, Kentucky, resolution, a resolution supporting reforms to the county employees' retirement system and to make the plan sustainable, sound, and secure for current and future employees. As you all know, the pension system is in distress, it's a hot topic with the legislature, and the purpose of this resolution is to encourage them to solve that problem.
Just so you all know, the guts of this resolution says it's resolved that the city council of the City of Erlanger supports the recommendations of the task force on Kentucky public pensions, and specifically resolved that we support specific components of the recommendation to adopt a hybrid cash balance plan for new employees and CERS, to reset the amortization period of the unfunded liability to a new 30-year period, to eliminate the automatic cost of living adjustments for all current and future CERS retirees, and to appoint additional member to the Kentucky Retirement System Board of Trustees selected by the governor from at least submitted by the Kentucky League of Cities, to get the cities some representation on that. That's the resolution you all are being asked to support. I'll entertain a motion to be adopted. Motion by Mr. Burke, second by Mr. Dunhoff. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Wick?
Last item is a resolution of adoption of the Northern Kentucky Area Development District Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. This is another federal requirement in regard to qualify for flood insurance. The hazard mitigation plan has been prepared by the Ad District for the areas within their jurisdiction, and this is a resolution adopting it. Again, it's something that's necessary in order to qualify for flood insurance.
Is there a motion that we adopt? Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Longshore, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. One more thing we forgot to do this evening, it's going to be busy on that third Tuesday, but I'd like to do this too, also in the Administration Committee, I'd like for you all to consider the job description of the new city coordinator position, so we can go ahead and get that reviewed and start the process. That shouldn't take too long, because I've heard no objections so far, but if it does, so be it, we need to get it at least through committee and then back to council. All right? Anything else for the good of the order? Yes, Mr. Longshore.
I screwed up on my vote. I was misunderstood what we were voting on on that very first one on my note, so just for the record.
We all did. Seriously. I mean, I was sitting over here going, what did I just vote for?
We figured it out.
Do you want to change your vote? Is that what you're telling?
Preferably, yes, if I could do that.
You want to make a motion to do? You want to make a motion to do that?
I'd like to make a motion to change my vote.
Second by Mr. Burke. Any discussion? Anybody opposed to letting Jim figure it out?
We're not in faith with that.
All in favor of Jim changing his mind, say aye.
Aye.
You call him Jim.
Shane's changed his mind, all right. I think that's passed by acclamation. I entertain a motion, we adjourn. Motion by Ms. Pitts, second by Mr. Longshore. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Carries. See you all March, we'll actually be two weeks.